Under. Justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. First thing tonight is a public hearing to certify some unpaid utility bills ordinance violations. Blueworth County, we have a list here. Discussion. Tom, if you're on there, I guess you want to make a statement.
First, can we, have you state your name and where you're from?
Yeah, Tom Schumaker. We're twenty-one South Halliday.
Yep.
I asked for this service to be discontinued in March or early April of last year. I didn't document it at that time because I didn't think there were any reasons. Didn't think I was going to have any issues. Obviously, it wasn't turned off. I'm in receipt of a letter dated thirty October, stating that an unpaid balance is going to be sent to Blueworth County. And I just want this resolved. In the time since I've been discontinued, no action has happened. The fact pattern very clear and I have it well documented. The device also not going to give you those details to me. But I'm going to have to say to forgive the current charges four fifty-six fifty-two and then reimburse me for what I've been, what I've paid since I asked for disconnection. I'm always being fourteen twenty-seven. So that total will be one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
So you, who did you contact, do you think, to have this discontinued? Was it the former street man or?
The contact city office.
Okay.
So he contacted the city office, wanted it disconnected. We couldn't turn the curb stop off. That was part of the problem. And we had, I had talked to the resident and stated that we couldn't. I think, actually, I think Grace might have done it. But we couldn't get the curb stop off. And so we had to have it repaired. And it was trying to get them to come out and repair it. And in conversation with our attorney and with Mr. Schumaker, he wanted it shut off and our attorney had first advised us against it, but then suggested that, yes, we could after consulting with Mr. Schumaker. And so then that's when we found out we couldn't get it shut off. And then once we could get it shut off, Mr. Schumaker had, I can't remember for, I think I have it documented. If it was me or if it was Grace and said, just leave it for now, I'll let you know later. And then we hadn't heard anymore.
So has it been repaired?
Yes, yes, it was repaired.
Yep. There's stuff got repaired and was identified as broken in May of last year. It did, I'm not going to go into too many of those details. But it was identified in May of last year on the first of May. And then it wasn't repaired until approximately, you know, late September, early October.
Yeah, I could find out when it was repaired. We had a hard time getting the guy out here too. But yeah, I have all that. I can find out when exactly that was.
The one you're right.
Contacted owning until late July.
To one of your rental properties?
Yes.
Is that one on the west side of the street? Is it, well, you got two of them on the west side of the street.
Yeah, it's four forty.
What number are you?
Four oh six.
Okay.
It's the first place.
It's the second. The two-story. With the front porch on.
Yeah, okay.
Nobody's been living in there for.
Not since May.
Yeah. So what were them first two figures you had, Tom?
The first one, Robert, is the amount of money I paid. Kind of, you know, really to avoid the city council having to deal with this in my name, being associated with unpaid bills. That first number is money I paid after I requested disconnection, eight fourteen twenty-seven.
Okay.
Then I said, I have made numerous requests to have it shut off and ask for explanations about why it was not shut off. Non-satisfactory and continue to get billed for it. So the current charges and the only way I could get the thing turned off was through four hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents in past due. And then it was discontinued, disconnected because of the unpaid bill. Now, the city is threatening to send to you Blueworth County and have it assessed on my property taxes.
We got a different figure here. Which figure are we supposed to go by?
The three ninety sixteen does not include the turn on. That's just the, there's a seventy-five dollar fee to shut it off. So that's what that includes is three ninety sixteen. It doesn't include the seventy-five dollars to turn it back on. So if you add the seventy-five dollars to the three nineteen, I guess I'm not sure where you get.
But then Tom continued to pay from last May way up through October, I take it? Is that correct?
It didn't get shut off. I don't remember.
I have to let him know.
I can, I can pull it up.
So that'd be six months went by there.
Past due balance to just to get your figure correct. And I don't know about seventy-five dollars or anything. But the disconnect fee on here is seventy-five dollars. A reconnect fee is not listed on here. And the total past due balance on the bill in my hand is four fifty-six fifty-two.
Does that?
So again, the total that I'm asking for in credit, one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, seventy-nine cents.
How'd you come up with that figure?
Again, the past due bill that's dated ten thirty-one twenty-five. And the the bills that I've paid since I asked for disconnection, six eighty-one fifty-five on four nine twenty-five, check number seventeen eighty-two, sixty-six thirty-six that I paid on five nineteen twenty-five, check number seventeen eighty-five. And the bill that I paid, sixty-six thirty-six, check number seventeen eighty-nine on twenty June. That's the last time I made payments that it gets shut off and I can quit paying it.
Is the issue resolved yet?
It's been shut off, but there's twelve hundred and seventy dollars hanging out.
Well, sixty-six thirty-six times twelve is only seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. That's per year.
Yeah, there was a past due balance when I paid Scott, when I paid the six hundred and eighty-one dollars fifty-five cents in April of this year, there was a past due balance.
So is that from the previous tenant?
That's since, that's charges since I asked for it to be disconnected.
So were there any, were there any charges unpaid by the previous tenant at all?
I think you could have that question better answered by the city clerk.
Okay.
There was no gallonage used, obviously. This is just the minimum, right?
Um, I would have to pull every bill.
Yeah.
I'm assuming there was probably just the minimum since.
Sixty-six thirty-six is the minimum. Because that's what I pay.
Six thirty-six. Not even, or sixty-six thirty-six.
Sixty-six thirty-six.
Anything that you've had to pay since May of two thousand twenty-four because the shut off was not shut off, I think that we should reimburse for sure, whatever other.
So with that, when we got the curb stop fixed, we had asked him and he said, I'll let you know because of the seventy-five dollar disconnect fee. And then we hadn't heard anything.
I never said I didn't want it turned off. I.
He didn't want to pay the seventy-five dollars.
Standing with my original request to have it turned off. That's, that's unspeakable.
And it is turned off.
It is now.
It is now turned off.
I quit paying the bill. So it was disconnected involuntarily disconnected. When I requested it, it didn't happen.
Yeah, well, if it's broke, it's hard to turn something off. It's broke.
But how long did it take to fix it? What did you ask for it to be shut off originally?
I asked in, uh, early April of twenty-four. The first time that we were able to document, um, anybody talking to Bonings about it was in July. And that wasn't repaired until end of September.
I'd have to pull the records.
Yeah.
I mean, we can definitely, um, I can pull out my documentation. Someone wants to meet, review this at a later date, we certainly can do so.
I don't really want a table. I think it should be resolved.
At the top of that, I can't pull anything at this point.
It's been going on for a long time. That's what this meeting is for. It should have been prepared.
Do you have documentation to submit to?
I can. I prefer not to. I think we all know when I asked for it to be shut off and it didn't happen.
What was the balance at the time that it was the first asked to be?
I would have to pull all that information.
See, it's just.
I mean, after several letters and unpaid and, you know.
Yeah.
It's all, like I said, I have it all.
Well, the fees, the seventy-five dollars each way is regardless. Everybody's going to pay them. They're in the, in the bylaws.
And that was why.
If you leave for the winter, you have to pay it. You come back in the spring, they have to pay it. I'm just stating.
I've read it. I understand.
Okay.
I don't dispute it in any way.
All right. Well, it's hard to just throw numbers at us like this without knowing backgrounds on.
Yeah, forgive me, but that's what this meeting is for, right? So we should have this prepared. You compelled me to be here tonight to dispute this and you're not prepared. That's not my problem.
Okay.
The whole idea of the letter that was sent out is if there's any questions that they come up and speak with, we speak with, with City Hall.
I agree.
Information is on there.
I agree, maybe a just, an adjustment needs to be made. But we're going to have to have all the documentation. And I'm not saying if you say we don't have it all and it's not available right now, this may not get solved tonight. We have to know the facts. I'm not voting on something, just grasping for numbers out of the air.
There's, there's not numbers out of the air.
I just wrote down a whole bunch of numbers. I don't have any proof or any documentation.
Well, you know, I didn't come up here to, to lie to you.
No, I never said you did.
I gave you dates and check numbers that are easily verifiable.
Okay. A nice.
I'm just asking for it to be resolved. This letter is pretty clear. If I don't come up here tonight and address this, it's being submitted to Blueworth County.
Well, we can act on that. That's not a problem.
If you, you know, if you want to, if you want to drag it down the road, adjudicate it next year, whatever it's.
We're not going to do it next year. No, we don't do that.
But we didn't think that we did that when we didn't turn it off either.
And, and that was not something that I was aware of.
This is the first I've heard of it. But I mean, I don't think we want to drag this out. Obviously, somebody dragged your feet and I'm getting the shut off fix turned.
Yeah, agreed.
But can we come to a dollar figure tonight so everybody's happy?
The other two utilities turned them off promptly. I didn't have any outstanding bills from there. You know, the reason I continue to pay was to avoid this. I didn't want to be here tonight. And I turned down a four-day vacation fee here tonight because I got this letter, right? So.
This wasn't the first letter that you had though.
Payments in between there as well, which I wasn't able to get receipts for, so I didn't bring those up tonight. I'm willing to settle for the twelve hundred seventy, whatever cents that was and be done.
That'd be the full amount though, that you want.
That's the full amount without, without getting the receipts for the cat, for the cat payments.
Any payment that was posted, I can pull up on our software. And I can do it tonight, but how long do we want to hang this out?
I think we're thinking about getting it done tonight. We don't have to come back here and table this. It just, it seems like a mistake that was made on.
Granted, but we got to know the information to make a do justice to the, the problem.
For the benefit of the council, my fact pattern is very clear. I have documented times when I've been up here. I have a recorded conversation. I have voicemail messages and I have email messages. The advice of council, I'm not going to disclose that stuff tonight. And I, and I won't until I'm compelled to under discover.
This is the first time you came up here and brought up anything involved.
Yeah, I've been trying to get it taken care of.
No, I'm just saying.
Looking to our.
So you got the disconnect notice. How come you didn't come up and have a conversation with me? Is what I'm asking. I mean, I, I hear you and I understand what you're saying, however.
I think what's happened is you turned it adversarial and I don't want to deal with it. That's why.
I don't know. I don't, I don't see that, but I mean, if you want to wait, I can pull up all the documentation.
I have to.
We're going to try to get something solved tonight.
It's going to be a dollar amount.
Would you, would you think that maybe you're a little at fault and the city's a little bit at fault or is the city one hundred percent at fault?
Robert, I take, I take, um, you know, what I do and don't do as my responsibility. Could I have been more proactive? Possible. The fact is, I've been up here numerous times to talk to the clerk and it's gone unresolved. There's, there's no good reason why it wasn't shut off to start with. I had to talk to the city attorney last year and you know, whatever reasons they decided to, to, um, between the clerk and the city attorney to set city policy about disconnect. Um, I don't know. They don't hold an election certificate. They don't, you know, they don't have the authority to, to, um, uh, dictate public policy for the city of Good Thunder. So there's issues there too with qualified immunity and all kinds of stuff that we can get into that I don't want to be. And I'm not pining for a problem, Robert, but I'm prepared.
Well, I'd like to get it resolved tonight because, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. Would you be happy to split the twelve seventy? We both take fifty fifty percent plan. Would that work for everybody? Just throwing it out there as a suggestion. That way we can be tonight, we can be done, we can start over even Steven and, and we're all done.
You know, I like the way you think, Robert, and.
Well, I mean, I want to get this resolved, so she don't, well, Sue has already left to go maybe look, but Tom, what do you think? Is that a idea?
Well, that would be a little under six fifty, which if he's paid, if you've paid that and payments are ready, I mean, I would say probably half's not enough, but.
When did, when did it get fixed again?
Because it was May of two thousand twenty-four, September, October of.
It went six months before it got shut off, right?
By.
Or no? Got shut off.
Correct.
You've said you've already paid eight fourteen just in bills since it hasn't been shut off.
Correct. You know, I'm not, I'm not up here to, the, the four fifty-six fifty-two isn't going to make or break me, right? It's not really, not really, uh. It's consideration, right? But it's, it's not just make or break factor. The money right now is not really the biggest reason I'm saying.
Because I would, I would think the fees after he said it was to be shut off and it didn't get shut off, so that would be the eight fourteen twenty-seven.
Yeah, because what was your bill, uh, are your number twelve, what?
It's twelve seventy seventy-nine total for the two.
They owe the seventies.
Eight fourteen twenty-seven. Forget the order there, but totals twelve seventy seventy-nine. Half of six thirty-five forty.
I can't tell you, Robert. Again, I didn't document before because I've never had a problem and didn't anticipate having a problem. It's always been really easy with the city of Good Thunder. Um, I can't tell you if there was an outstanding balance when I paid the six eighty-one. But I'm guessing, I mean, just based on the way things work, right? I paid six eighty-one fifty-five in April. Zero it out.
That was April this year, right?
Then following two months, following two months, I paid it because I had asked, hey, talk to whoever you got to talk to and get this thing worked out. And it didn't. So then I quit paying the bill. So then it would be shut off. And I.
Is it shut off right now?
Yeah. I believe if I hadn't kept paying the bill, it would never have been shut off.
Were you involved in any of this, Eli?
Uh, I shut it off when I posted the disconnect notice and then I shut it off. I don't have the date that I did that, but just this, uh, within the last two months.
Yeah.
Well, you started in April, right? So October seventh.
Started end of April. So it wasn't before that.
That was.
What's that? October it was shut off.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Okay.
So I mean, I don't know about the previous, previous balance stuff, but whatever you've incurred incurred since you've requested the shut off, which you're saying is that eight hundred dollars, eight fourteen twenty-seven? I mean, that's what I, I, I would propose as a settlement.
I kind of side with Amy on that.
What do you have, Scott?
Whatever he, he asked to have it shut off, but we couldn't shut it off. That's my opinion.
Would be eight fourteen twenty-seven.
Yeah.
And that would have been starting. That's the May twenty-fourth date or is that the September, October?
It was April something, wasn't it, Tom?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, it was the end of March or early April. And I contacted all utilities for that property. And then again, just the way I expected it to go was the same way the other two utilities handled it. No, on the first of May it was cut off.
How about the house to the north? Is that shut off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Just wondering, so we're all on the same page about that property.
May twenty-first, you sent an email that says you wanted to revisit the shut off because of the minor child that was living in the facility. So at that point in May twenty-first of two thousand twenty-four, you revoked the shut off. You were rethinking it and you were going to let me know. There's an email I can print out if you'd like.
Well, I might have said I was going to revisit it, but I can say I didn't want it shut off.
You said I need to rethink it. Hold on.
So why did Bonings get involved after that?
They had to come out and repair the curb stop.
Whether it was going to be shut off or not?
Yeah.
You wanted to make a decision after the curb stop is replaced prior to continuing with my request.
And when, you know, and when Race was out.
And then on the day twenty-first.
He asked me if he wanted it, if I wanted it off and I said, I don't. We were standing in my front yard, Boning was still in the property.
Would have been working then?
Race.
Race would have been, okay.
Twenty-four, yeah.
Pardon?
Twenty-four, May of twenty-four.
Yeah. So you asked him at that, that time that you wanted it shut off?
Yeah, then after it was repaired.
Yep.
And, and like I said, that was end of September, first part of October of last year. What I wanted to do then, and I said, my position stays the same because I just wanted it disconnected. Having it connected and in my name continue to cause me problems for, you know, until March of this year.
Are you going to continue to use it as rental property?
I may.
Because on all the rental properties, the owner is the top person.
I know.
Yeah, okay.
It was a pretty, uh, discapable experience I had this last time. I mean, I haven't decided.
That's why I wouldn't be a word myself, but I wouldn't want that job.
Jim, if you wanted to put that on the market, you don't want this on there. Texted.
And I, I don't really want my name associated. So that's why I paid the, that's why I paid the six eighty-one and the two following calls. But yeah, here I sit.
Well, can we come to some kind of agreement tonight? Or?
I would suggest the, the pay, uh, Tom, the eight fourteen twenty-seven, pull the, pull the, um, tax thing that we're on for the resolution that we have and all are good. The rest will have to be written off if there's still a remaining balance.
Anybody else with further discussion? Got Jim?
The eight fourteen twenty-seven was the charges since he said to shut it off. Was there any unpaid balance before that?
No, the, um, person who was renting it did come in and pay some. And then, yeah, and May twenty-first, he, um, asked for his stop on the shut off until he had a chance to rethink. It was called a game day decision.
Anybody else? If not, John, you want to make a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to reimburse, um, Tom for the eight fourteen twenty-seven. Remove them from the, um, resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, so it doesn't go to Blueworth County. And if there's a remaining balance that we city write it off.
All right, someone in a second. Well, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. All right, probably a little bit of everybody's fault, but we don't want to sit here and come back a month from now and you get the issue, it's just the issue. You know, we just want to take care of business. We're done. I hope you're happy.
Yeah.
We're not blaming anybody on either party. We're just taking care of business and getting it done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the remaining remainder of these on this list here. Do, what do we have to do? Just, uh, check them over and like kind of certify them and then.
Conversation, otherwise council approves the resolution.
Oh, like the first one with the second one line item down now. Now, if, did you happen to go by there today, Eli? Were they cleaning?
I believe they were doing some work cleanup, yes.
So I can see where this is going to go.
But these are the fines associated with that.
Yeah, I know.
It's just.
And he's going to come and say, I cleaned that up, but it's too late because we're having a meeting.
We're glad he's cleaning it up, but the city's already incurred the.
Yep, yep.
Um.
We did nothing until it was time.
All right. Anybody got a question on any of them? If not, then somebody make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve in twenty twenty-five dash fourteen excluding Thomas Schumaker.
All right, somebody's second. Second, let them know in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. And we can close the public hearing, so we make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Someone in a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I oppose, motion carried. And now we can open the regular council meeting. Uh, first thing is we consent agenda. This is our only second time on this one, so if there's any questions on any of the regular business, do, did you say we, we address it now or a little later?
We pull it out, approve the consent agenda with the subtraction of whatever one.
All right. Anybody got anything you want to pull out of the consent?
No, it wouldn't look fine to me.
All right, if not, somebody make a motion to approve. Make your motion. Someone in a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. All right, community comment? Looks like we're good there. Uh, South Point Credit Union. Sitting in the back row.
And I'm, I'm a patient. I'm going to get up and talk, so.
You can't page.
So I was contacted regarding an information about our HSAs that we carry, South Point Bankers Credit again. Just to give you a little history, South Point's been around since nineteen thirty-six, started in Stevie and I've expanded to eight branches, uh, South. Expanded to eight branches, uh, South Central, Central Minnesota. Um, one of the um, what we carry there, one of the things that we carry there are HSA accounts. And again, um, do um, had. I think been recommended through another party to just check us out. She had contacted me, just asked some questions. Um, I got some information um, for you all. And then I just offered to just come down and basically do a a a question and answer type of thing based on our HSA accounts. That it sounds like would be for.
Those two at the end.
Yeah, so. Laid out in your packet there, there's three things. There's my card. There's the, just a little bit about the HSAs and where the limits are gonna be for. The remainder of twenty twenty five and then twenty twenty six, the changes, the slight changes. And then the second thing is actually my product guide on this, on the HSAs that I study to learn something, so. Um, it's nothing that I can't share with you. Yeah, I'm basically here just to. Answer questions you may have on our HSA accounts. And how we handle them, um, basically what your guys' part would be and.
So that's another part on our agenda tonight is to go over um, new insurance for the upcoming year for the for the employees, so. And we've talked about getting an HSA um. In the past, but never really looked into it. So is this some, this would be something outside. Now we're, because our insurance comes through M and M, Ableton.
Yep.
But this would just be a place where the HSA would go to. Our plan, if we we approve it tonight, to move to that HSA through M and M, this would just be a funding vehicle for.
Right, or essentially the. Old, the the savings account for it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, if you're going through M and M, they're gonna handle it and then. As far as payment goes, or the ACHs that go to these accounts, that's just whatever you do with payroll.
Okay.
Or they they would handle it, set it by. Assuming Sue.
Right, yeah.
They would be diff, could they be different amounts between the two employees?
I think so, yeah, okay.
So it's based on the eligibility of a high deductible plan. So whatever plan you guys, and it's laid out here on the bottom of the. This page here, it's the qualifications for the high deductible plans, whatever you guys are looking at. Um, but yes, then um, whatever amount you guys uh, determine, um, you guys would, the city would contribute. And then the employees have the option to contribute, um, if the city's amount doesn't equal up to the. You know, Eli, if Eli's a single person, he has a single um, contribution, he can max it out at forty three hundred for twenty five, twenty twenty five. If the city's contributing three thousand, Eli can contribute an additional thirteen hundred spread out through his paycheck. So it would just be a separate ACH.
Okay. So that those, so we'll be looking at twenty twenty six, so. City only covers for the employee, not family, so they're both single regardless of status, so. So for twenty twenty six, we're looking at the forty four hundred. So if the city were to give. I'm just throwing it off right now, two grand. Then they can make a twenty four hundred dollar difference throughout the pay.
If they wanna split it up through, if you guys do biweekly, um, without giving out too much information, we're biweekly where I work.
Right.
Mine's split up. Between the twenty six paychecks. But yes, it's additional, as long as it doesn't go over the forty four they moved it up to for twenty twenty six. Um, if an additional payment does put you over that forty four, it's actually either kicked back to you or it's put into your. Membership savings account. You do have to have a membership savings account to be a member of a credit union.
So you have to get up to that forty four hundred? No, anything below.
There's no penalty for getting or for maxing it out or not maxing it out.
Just can't go over it.
You just can't go, and when, you wouldn't be allowed to because it's all based on. Um, the contribution through your social security number and we are um, informed once the um. Any contribution comes over to, that would put you over, um, if even if it's a partial payment, um. Twelve dollars is gonna be returned and then we decide if we're gonna put in your savings or if we, how you guys wanna handle that.
Okay. So when they're say over fifty five, they can actually put fifty four hundred.
That's the only leeway on that is once you do hit fifty five, you have a catch up, or it's called a catch up, you can put an additional thousand dollars in there.
This ain't the one that they gotta spend it or lose it. It's like a.
Carries over, carries over. I've had mine for four and a half years and I have not, I've I've not used all of mine. And there's no penalty for that. Um, we have no annual fee on ours. Um, it does state, um, the members will get a fee schedule. I believe it's every January or February of every new year. It does state in our fee schedule, there's a ten dollar service charge for it. We have to put that in there by law. We chose not to. Charge that, so there is no fee for having an HSA.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is that like the five dollar opening an account thing or?
So the 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 opening in the accounting, we, for the the credit union, we ask for a ten dollar um. Payment or or deposit and that's put into your um, membership savings. That is your placeholder, become a member owner, give you voting rights at an annual meeting and stuff like that. Now with this situation with the business, um, we um. In collaboration with our business development team, decided that this would be. Um, something that we could run through marketing and we would actually cover that ten dollar initial deposit. Um, and the deposit comes back. They would ever close out their accounts completely with South Point. So it's just that ten dollars basically gives them a name at South Point and a. Um, right to vote on everything.
Unless they were already a member, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And even if the city does the single coverage, which is what their guidelines are. Do they have the option then if they chose to? Um, put in the others, turn it into a family coverage?
We can turn it into a family, yes, we would just need. The notice and then there's information we would need on spouses or family members.
Is, then there's no minimum for that family coverage and you know, it's maximum.
Nope.
I, but if eighty seven fifty, I take it for twenty six?
Yeah, eighty seven fifty for twenty twenty six and how they do it, and it's every single year, so it starts January first, but you actually have. So twenty twenty five, you could pay until April fifteenth. On twenty twenty five's year, so April fifteenth of twenty twenty six, you can still make contributions towards the twenty twenty five year.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay.
Have you guys? Public or the personnel, have you met with uh, Sue and Eli at all about?
We met this past week and and um, we're gonna go over some of that later.
Okay.
Um, but the HSA we've we've been talking about and they're both more than willing to be on board and.
Okay.
Couple of other things that come with this is. Um, if a person decides to use checks or wants checks associated with this health savings account. Um, the credit union buys your first folder or forty checks, um. After that, if you use all those up, you're kind of on the work for it. Right now, I think they're running twenty three bucks for pack of forty. Um, we also have a, I think it's two, two point oh one eight uh, annual percentage yield on that, so you're gaining some interest on that money in that account. And everything shows up on, we have online banking, it'll show up on their mobile app or their online banking. And um, then it obviously gives them access to all of our other accounts here that I'm not here to sell you on tonight, so.
Good, we're not buying.
And then obviously, we um, with one of the few financials around that do print debit cards, um, regular debit cards and HSA debit cards. On site, so if one of theirs would break or they would lose it, they can literally walk in our branch and in six minutes, we can have one printed for them.
Okay.
So as soon as, uh, just say for a figure, the city throws in two thousand and uh. Just say there wasn't any employee contribution, that two thousand would be available to that individual.
Yeah, so if you split up the two thousand between your paychecks, you know, if it comes to a hundred and twenty five dollars each paycheck. As soon as that's deposited in their account, it's available to them.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
All right.
Hey, so the only thing then, well, and just like I said, we're gonna be needing some kind of later, so um. We move to the HSA insurance, then. M and M will contact you or?
Um, you get, um, Sue would probably contact us and. What I did offer and we have the capabilities of doing, and I know it's just the two of them as of right now. Um, we have the capabilities of actually coming down to your office and getting them signed up so that they don't have to come in or call in. Do the electronic paperwork and whatnot, or the signatures. We've got the capabilities coming down here and opening the account right here on the spot.
Okay, cool. So customer service. It's a thing of the past.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of the things that we're just adding in the last three, four months I never thought I would see in my lifetime and it's, banking's changing, so. It's, you know, everything is.
Shows healthcare.
Yeah.
That's all we've heard for the last six weeks about healthcare.
Yeah.
Can you get this HSA without insurance?
No, it has to be with a qualified high deductible plan.
What is a high deductible nowadays?
So of this, this sheet right here.
I see that, yeah.
Yep, so on the bottom, it actually says a qualifying high deductible ones. It'll give you the. Um, for the single coverage in twenty twenty six, it's going to be a minimal deductible of seventeen hundred. And a max out of pocket for eighty five hundred. And then if you do the family one, obviously you can see those figures there.
All right. Well, like, that explained good enough for everybody.
And if you got any questions, like I said, you have my farthest got my office number on there. I don't think they put my cell number on there, but. Um, who's been able to track me down before, so.
Yeah.
Good, all right, pretty good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you guys for the time.
Alrighty, straight up then, Eli.
So uh, I apologize for the confusion of me not being here last month. Uh, we all know I'd rather have been here, but do we have, is there any questions held over that?
Brian was pretty thorough.
Yeah, I've, I didn't obviously anticipate being gone, but I was glad that I did leave something up, so. I won't read everything that I typed up this month, but uh, we did get the catch basin uh, space. Um, and I did just give back at second quote for concrete last week, so our low quote. Which I think was in your packet was for three different areas and I. I ideally, I ideally wanted these kind of split up so we could see what we're paying for, but um. He didn't wanna do that because he didn't want to try to kind of sever it off and say, well, let's just do this third. He wanted kind of the package. I'm gonna be in town, I wanna do all three of these, so. Uh, the three areas are uh, the curving gutter for the catch basin here. Uh, and that would be to rewrap that radius and get the proper reading. Down to the catch basin at uh, Health and Willard. And then the other area is for panels that are really just in kind of a grade F condition. Uh, along the city park here. Um, that are maybe a little.
What's the footage on that?
The footage on.
On the sidewalk.
Up here?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't have, let's see. I don't have those loads with me, but there was, I believe, five panels and those were like four and a half by six, so that'd be. Um, and one set off, so it's a little more, but basically it'd be um. Four and a half by thirty feet of fountain at the city park here. And again, that's uh, kind of. Big lips where they're heaved from tree roots. Um, from mature trees, so we're hoping that the kind of the roots are stabilized and they're not gonna just heave again. Uh, and then there's a few where the concrete's degraded and there's almost a a pothole, um. So that's by the uh, city park there and then the third spot is uh. The block east of the bell tower on the south side of the road, so it'd be like that. Um, house next to the post office, but on the north side of that. On Main Street, um, I believe there's. Seven panels, that'd be roughly forty three by six feet.
That's the one that butts up the county road.
And that's on the county road, so that is eligible for cost share and I got all that information out to the county, um. They would cover, I I think my numbers are actually, oh no, they are right, so they would cover twelve fifty. Of that twenty five hundred for that area, so basically it'd be this quote minus twelve fifty. To get all three of the areas done.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, though, I mean, there's, there's panels out, all out, all over town that we could kind of nitpick and say. Um, but these two areas are definitely in dire need of something.
Is he gonna rod them sidewalks together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause otherwise you're gonna have a trip, trip hazard in two years.
Yep.
Gonna miss the line.
Yep.
So if he rods them together, it's a good, good deal there.
So.
Hands are with the weather now, it's.
He, he says he's. Uh, he says he has time yet, so he said he might have to throw a link it over him for a week, but um. Until the ground really freezes up, which I think, you know, this week we're hopefully.
After today or tomorrow, it'll be great again.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think there's enough explanation here, we can get this work done, especially down there.
Right.
And uh, it's a good, it's a good quote.
It is, um, I I don't remember, I could pull up the other one, but the other one was over ten grand.
Yeah.
We're talking about the quote from MK?
The MK guy, yeah. It's a little confusing again because it's pulling in multiple, multiple areas, so there's the the. Catch basin project plus this sidewalk repair.
Basically buying three things.
Correct, yeah.
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 Well, with that being said, then somebody might make a motion to approve this uh, estimate quote from MK Concrete to get these areas fixed. Yet this fall in town.
I think the stipulation was is we couldn't start any work on the county.
Right.
Until it gets approved from what I read.
Yep, so we, we submitted it and I told them when I called them and had a conversation with them and I said, hey, we kinda, if we can get this expedited. I know they're trying to get stuff wrapped up too, but get it expedited so they can give the okay. And then we can for sure get that twelve fifty.
Still the worst it'd be is the sixty nine.
Right, we. If they said no, we'd be on the hook for their twelve fifty, but.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean.
They, I think they wanna make sure they're not getting taken advantage of and we're not just saying like, hey, you know, we're spending money on this. So I think they've wanted to do their due diligence for, you know, again, we're paying their taxes to them, so they're doing their due diligence. But uh, I would foresee them, um, especially with the shape that concrete for that sidewalks in, I would see them improving it.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion then for this, with that? Keep, keep that in mind that, you know, if it didn't get approved, it costs us sixty nine hundred. If it gets approved by the county, it'll be twelve fifty less, right?
Correct.
Yep. Somebody wanna make that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the MK Concrete for the three locations.
All right.
Seventy nine. Whatever.
Sorry, ninety nine hundred even.
Sixty nine hundred, somebody to second that?
I'll second it.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
Uh, then the other sidewalk maintenance item was doing that safe step and they. Um, they work in a lot of towns, uh. Especially up around the cities, but Amboy is one of their customers and I think they have other stuff down south here. Um, so I know Brian explained it a little bit, but basically. Any areas where the concrete is heaved, they can come in and they can cut and make that an ADA compliant grade. Um, the other big benefit to that, um, and and not to beat it at horse, because this is already approved, but. Uh, there were areas, we were catching plow edges on the sidewalk and stuff by the fire station. They'll be in town um. Tomorrow and or Wednesday to do that. Um, I did pick up six trees, Eatonville uh, did a good job of uh. Giving guidance or suggestions. They also ended up giving us contracted pricing, so. I had asked for fifteen hundred dollars for six trees, um. Knowing that I could work within that, I think the tree price was like eight fifty for the six trees. It was a really good deal.
Thanks.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yep.
Should have bought more.
So if, just going forward, if we want more, I just, I'm gonna need help with like, where do we wanna put them? Because I don't wanna put a tree somewhere and somebody else say, hey, why do we do it here, right? So I'm, I'm. More than happy to play more trees, I enjoy. Enjoy doing it, but uh, yeah, just so we can get them in places that make sense with, to everyone. Uh, bum 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 bum. With uh, uh, killing this more work down at the archery range, uh, I helped him out with setting some posts and stuff. Um, he did get kind of a block shooting lane laid, um, and we got that packed in. It looks pretty nice. If you guys have time, go down and check it out. Um. We did have. We did have, this is getting into Brian's water stuff, but he's not here, so I'll cover it for him, I guess, this time around. We did have two separate events where our high service pump, which is the pump that fills our water tower, had faults. The first was a simple reset button and it took off again. The second was we weren't getting power somewhere where we should have had power and before we were able to figure that out. Like, you know, you've probably seen before, all of a sudden everything lit up and it started going again. We did get, have Luke Cran stop by and he looked and he found a few areas where he was able to tighten things up. Potentially the issue, we're just kind of watching that. I did water mains, I flushed those last week. Got most of the leaves picked up. The pond chemical building just kind of keeps chugging along, so we're waiting for a few pieces of trim in a door. Brian got the discharge done. I believe that was shut off today. And then we'll. Learn to transfer over, so we got picked up a little bench and we'll get the pumps rigged up to do the chemical injection for the phosphorus. While they were working on that, I wanted to flush a meeting that did work on the fence a little more. I truck is bad on the road and running well. They just fall in and the sander rate control. I still intend to address here, hopefully before the snow flies or more snow flies, I shouldn't say. The Pelican sweeper, I was hoping to make it on the broom cores that I had and then just kind of do a big project all at once. But that, that was wore off to the point where I was, I wasn't hardly picking up leaves anymore, so. Brush works dropped off a new broom core and I got that swapped out and that does. Much better job. And then that bucket and adapter for sifting through compost and loading concrete for the deer tractor. Finally showed up. That bucket was a long wait, but we did get that. Hoping to get concrete, at least most of it loaded out and then. We got that tire quote approved through Bauer Belt, so that'll be. I'm hoping not to load concrete with the new tires.
With that being said about that concrete, I mean, I've had a. Few people ask, you know, are we gonna do away with that? Or if they take out a. From here to Sue a sidewalk, their private sidewalk and it's in small chunks. Are we gonna allow people to make their properties look better and us provide a place to get rid of that cement? Just like we do the leaves, you know, they're all leaves down there. We're, we're gonna take care of all that. We take care of all the brush. I mean, there's one house that they took the front step out. Now it's around on the other side of the house. So if they would have had a place close, would they have took it and been done? And this is not for any demo work, but just small, small little jobs. I mean, is this something we want to provide as a city?
I mean, it would seem like common sense, but.
I mean, it got abused once this summer, but that would be the first time it's really ever gotten abused.
At least twice.
Was it, wasn't there recently some big dumping of concrete down there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was a whole, yeah, floor. I'm just talking, you know. Small little jobs where you might have three little wheelbarrows full or stuff like that. I mean. If we had the dirt all cleaned up and we had just a specific little concrete pile, the city be.
I, I could see the city saying if they're doing the boulevard sidewalk, but if. If it's on their property side, it'd be a different story.
Yeah, but then you, you're trying to make it look better for the city also. So, you know, can the city do that far to allow that stuff to be put down there? Or if they have a project. We need to know how much.
Yeah.
Allow, allow it, but we need to know how much.
Who's gonna police it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they ask.
You put one down there, you're gonna have dump trucks down there.
If they ask, I have a.
Yeah, then they'll say, well, you said a little bit. Well, what's a little bit?
Well, like I said, three, four.
Then you've got somebody that drinks a truckload down there and nobody knows whose it is because there's no cameras there. Now the city's on the hook for that. Well, because somebody else dumped it there, so I can dump my four pieces.
Yeah, I know that.
You know, you go down a rabbit hole.
I'd agree with that.
But we kind of had that there forever, you know.
But my, like, my understanding was it wasn't ever officially anybody could dump there, but there was.
City was using it.
Right, it was for city stuff. It was my, the explanation given to me. Now, if, if we want to change, if. You guys want to change that, that's a council decision to be made and I'll, I'll take my guidance from whatever that decision is, but.
Cause there's still a lot of, an awful lot of concrete down there, isn't there?
There's a lot of concrete down there, yeah, and, and I don't know how much of it was the city's or how much of it just kind of collected over the years. But I mean, it's, it's not gonna be a, a half a day job to get.
There's bricks down.
No, and it hasn't been cleaned up for, I'd say. I don't know if it's ever been cleaned up since it originally started, eight, ten, twelve years ago.
Right, and WW even when they were in town.
And they took.
Their loader down and they took quite a, I think they took two big tandem dump truck loads down, but they said, eh, it's kind of. That, that's the other problem is you don't always get good, clean concrete and that's what these guys want who are crushing it. They don't, you know, one, one day I.
Like no rebar, no.
Rebar, it depends on who it is. Rebar is a bigger deal to some people than others. If we're taking it for, he's, he's not set up to handle the rebar. But one day I caught somebody down there and it was like shower tile and insulation and stuff and then I'm like. Where's this, where's this even coming from? And it wasn't even, the guy didn't even live in city limits and I said, he. Buzz off, you know, he loaded back up and he took it out, but that's, you know. Where do you, where do you draw the line on that and how do you. Police it effectively or how do you make it fair where it's available to everyone?
That's happened with the brush pile. There's brush that's come in from out of Colin.
Oh, yeah.
Down there.
Yeah.
You know. It was just an idea, you know, to provide a place for somebody to get rid of some.
It's a good idea if everybody had.
I know, and since it's a tough, but I guess you. We were talking about putting signs down there. Is that something that's?
So there is small no dumping signs there now, just because it was getting such a, yeah.
I'm just saying if we went to having some type of a service. We'd have to have something down there saying that there's no dumping here without prior authorization.
Yeah.
There's gonna have to be like a permit process almost and then we'd have to set a. This is my idea, again, it's, it's up to you. Yeah, there'd have to be a cost per. Unit that we assign to it so that people could pay because it, it's, it's gonna cost us to get rid of what's down there, but.
It'll be your time and the, the running of the equipment is what our costs will be.
For sure, yeah.
Well, it's almost winter. We won't have to worry about it.
People, they have their concrete done and they figure that in the bill anyway, disposal of it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's whenever anybody asks me, I always tell them like, fouries will take it. Irvine pit, you can get permission and dump out there as well, so otherwise I think. There's two pits in Manjato that'll take it, so.
That was just a suggestion.
It's good to know that you know. And it'd be good that you to know that, I guess, too, if somebody did call. You could direct them to, I mean, they're gonna load it up and take it down there to dump it. They could take it to Irvine's pit or. You know, fouries pit, they're the two closest.
And for, for Irvine's pit, I, you do need permission. I would imagine fouries too, so, yeah.
All right, anything else, Eli?
I do not have anything else.
Uh, three lights?
Lights.
Oh, yep. Is that a trick question you were setting me up for? Yeah, are we all right having, and, and I've talked to Luke. I did get a number. I don't remember what he. What I heard.
It was a hundred bucks last year to take him down. I think it was a hundred bucks to put him up.
Yeah, a hundred or two hundred.
Yeah, somewhere to that effect.
Yeah, I had asked him just to make sure because he's got staffing problems too or staffing, yeah, concerns, but. He said he'd be down to do it, so.
Yeah, probably.
Do we want him up before Thanksgiving if possible?
Like last year, we put him up like the first week of December, didn't we?
I remember, whenever he can get him fit in, probably is where you're.
But we had, it was Brian's the one that put him up last year, right? Because Race had already left.
No, they took, we had Luke take him down. Brian and, or Race and Kellen put him up last year.
Oh, okay, all right.
Helen put him up last.
Yeah, I like, I like the Luke's electric.
Yeah, they've got the equipment and it's a lot safer. Yeah, or a hundred fifty, whatever.
I just come out of parks anyway.
Right.
Probably.
Streets.
Street.
All right, does anybody have? Water wastewater update from Ryan? Do you have anything there, Eli?
Just that, yeah, he finished up the discharge. We'll be doing the trains for, in that chemical buildings waiting for. Doors and things.
All right. And the next thing is.
Something about the joke, one of the doors. I talked to him Sunday.
Down to clerk pressure. Update.
So we have some more information on the Minnesota family paid leave. That is going to be taking effect January first. In your package, there was the overview on it and the tentative policy update that I got from COG. So basically it's a. It's a kind of a cost share between the. Employee and the employer, because we are a small. Business, so to speak, we have less than thirty employees. We only, we will have to pay point six-six percent of the yearly income. And the yearly gross wages. And when I figured it out, it seemed to be less than three hundred dollars a year for the employees portion. And I know council at first suggested to pay a hundred percent of it. After talking with Burkhart and with COG. I'm asking council to just pay the fifty percent, so. Out of the point six-six percent, the city would pay the point three-three and the employees would pay point three-three. It's just a cleaner for bookkeeping and it's just.
Yeah, they suggest it'd be cleaner that way.
It'd be cleaner that way, otherwise if the city pays it, then it's considered income and it goes on the W two.
Yeah.
It's taxed.
And a benefit.
Correct. Yep.
All right.
And it's not a very, yeah.
So if we pay half and we pay half, it doesn't go on there?
Correct. This will be a pretext. If I'm not mistaken, I think I'm pretty sure it's a pretext.
And that goes into effect.
First, yep.
So you would want a motion on that then, that. Yeah, cost share fifty percent.
Yeah, and we also would need a motion to approve. The policy, right?
The approval policy?
Yes, but to approve the paid leave portion of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I need a motion to do that as well.
May want to make those two motions. One that would be cost. Half and half a point three-three employee and the city of Good Thunder and for the policy. We put it under one or you want to?
Put it under one.
I'll make that. We approve the Minnesota quickly. Have stated with the cost share between the employee and the city.
I'll second the notion.
All papers say aye. Motion carried.
And I don't know if we set the TNT. If we already, you guys already did, I don't remember. Just kind of a reminder, it will be December eighth.
Yeah.
At seven o'clock at the beginning of our meeting.
That's the TNT again.
Truth and taxation.
Actually, yeah.
And that's when they approve the final levy.
And we did end up zero, right?
Correct.
For the third year in running.
Since I've been here, so I don't know what you did before.
Well, you're.
We, we can.
Curious to see what's gonna come on that line item and the city of Good Thunder again when we get our tax statement.
That's, I was gonna say it, we face zero with the county.
When that happens, we need to invite our commissioner here to explain to us. Why they put a dollar a month on our line item when we're all frugal, taking care of business and putting it well.
I think we need to make that a special meeting. Our county commissioner will talk a long time.
We could definitely, I could definitely ask him to.
Yeah, I would like to know.
December eighth meeting.
Nah, I think we'd have to wait till first of year or whatever.
Come on, I would, yeah.
Whenever that tax statement comes out or whatever, yeah. Because. We're doing our due diligence, taking care of business and they keep putting money in our line item and. It should be. And I don't know how they can do that.
A pretty good explanation for our city people because we didn't have a good explanation. The last time it was awesome.
Yeah, all right.
He did, did say the other night that they're going with the bridge over at nine two, so.
They are gonna?
No.
They better and, and you get going on that.
Yeah, really. Said it's all. All the engineering and I asked myself, so is that, what are they gonna do at the dam? And he says they're engineering it so they don't have.
You wouldn't have to engineer it, put it right back where it was.
Yeah.
I mean, really? You could have poured cement under the. Whatever.
Or get a governor to put the money in that they already allocated for the project.
All right, so it's November twenty-sixth to December first?
Yes, that's over Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Wednesday to the following Monday, I'll be off.
All right. Already, anything else, Sue?
No.
All right, unfinished business, personnel policy updates and changes.
Yeah, so Jim and I met last week. We went through the, pretty much the whole, whole thing and we do have proposals and some changes. There were a couple typos. One is under job descriptions. That, that's the, the main category is employee, employment guidelines, is to add a blurb about annual reviews. That this is just kind of a. Quick synopsis, each full-time employee will have an annual performance review completed in April of each year. Reviews will be prepared and discussed with the employee by the Personnel Committee. The review will be used to justify any salary benefit increases and to review important performance.
Would you ever meet with employees once a quarter? Just to see how the job is going and if there's any issues with their job?
I think we're small enough where if there's issues, they can come to us anytime without having to. Just actual time.
An employee and the, the employee or the personnel committee could actually do that as well. I mean, you could put something in there for as needed.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. And then under compensation and benefits, we're gonna remove the blurb that talks about life and disability insurance. Because we, the city does not offer it and it's not a, anything that we can add through M and M insurance. It's nothing that's available for us to add. But we are gonna have to add.
Health savings account?
Yeah, health savings account and then. I think. Don't remember. And then also blur from comp time, because we're gonna do. Both Sue and Eli have brought up that they would be. Open instead of us paying them overtime if dollars, but damn overtime in comp time.
More time off, more. PTO, however you wanna call it.
Well, with Sue, there's just gonna be no real worry. It though, where we could run into problems is with Eli once we get in, if we get a heavy snow year where he's. Working every weekend or, you know, a lot at night, but.
Because this is the way it was set up thirty some years ago. And there was comp time. Forever.
You could put a cap on it or you could also, and I talked to the personnel committee, you could also, they're allowed to carry over so much.
Yeah, that's right.
That February or whatever, anything over.
Right.
Hours.
Yeah, they have to be a payout, yeah. And then that would just be regular wages, you know.
Right.
Yeah, because you'd want to have a cap on it or you'd want to have a limit on it because. We were down there. If Tom Frelick was here, he could tell you what kind. Comp time there was.
Okay, yeah. And another change with.
Over, on on.
Posing in, in the paid time off PTO. Portion of the. In the uh, paid time off PTO um, portion of the uh, there's a contradiction where one paragraph says that an um, PTO can be paid for any reason after six months probationary period. And then the next one, under the administration of PTO, new employ, new full-time employees cannot use PTO until they have successfully completed, waited three months. So we're suggesting that we change in both to read three months.
Yeah.
So.
You got a lot of notes here, John.
And then uh, the only other one day was under separation was uh, we have it that, that employee has to um, give a thirty day notice in order to receive PTO. My feeling is it should be the normal standard fourteen days or two weeks. Just every, every business that is customary norm and to go beyond that, I think.
That means to uh, leave employment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just a standard two week notice. And then if they don't, if say they do like a Heather low, then there's no PTO paid, so.
Because didn't we just run into that problem?
That wasn't a great, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
It is the same thing you're talking about, though, I think.
I think there was a little issue at paying the last employee out.
Yes, and we didn't, so.
Okay, so now it's down and it's etched in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got rid of the gray area.
Yeah.
Make it the same.
Yeah, and then the only other things that we'll need to add then are gonna be the um, we need to add a blurt on FMLA, cause we don't have anything in uh, family, family medical leave. Uh, which has been around for a long time and that's just like, best example of say, uh, somebody has a new baby and they wanna take time off. It's not paid under FMLA, but your, your position and it's basically an extended unpaid vacation. But now with the Minnesota paid leave, that could be used in conjunction with an FMLA, right?
Correct, it's kind of, they kind of run, run the same. The only difference is the paid, I believe is what it says, paid FMLA was unpaid, but you still came back at your same pay, your same position, everything.
But do you have to get an amount in there? Say uh, they're gonna have, somebody's gonna have a baby and you just started this in January. There's no money in there.
Under FMLA, there's, there's no reimbursement to the employee.
Okay.
It's just, it's just time off, unpaid time off. But now under, under. Minnesota leave one, now this is gonna be interesting to watch others. State of Minnesota may approve Minnesota leave, paid leave. So, and it's not, it's gonna have to, basically you have to put an application that Sue's gonna have to forward to somewhere in the state. And they will say yea or nay if they're gonna get paid, so.
Yeah, cause this thirty-three and or this sixty-six goes to the state, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes. The one big bucket and it doesn't matter if you've only paid him twenty bucks or not. If you're, Eli goes out middle of January for six weeks, he's gonna get that. If he qualifies for it and is approved, he'll get that benefit.
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting to watch that. But yeah, it's basically a premium that we'll, we'll be splitting with the employee that will go to the state.
And chances are it's going to go up next year, cause I think it's, starts with June. I think is when they review it to change it for the following year. So, yeah, it's probably going to increase.
One of those things that can't have, it's, it's like an insurance. You, you. If all public employees are in, in there and they all take thirty days off and you got fifteen dollars in of them, there's not enough money to finance that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, so should we have a, a, a proof, a, a motion to approve those changes? Or do we wanna wait until we actually?
Let's wait until we have it in hand.
Okay.
And then everybody can review it, yeah.
All right. So the help dental insurance under new business? Is that part of the HSA? Cause it says dental in that. Can be used for, I mean.
Right, yeah.
HSA can be pay, used to pay for dental bills.
Any type of medical.
Can be, HSA's can be used for prescriptions.
No.
Medical bills.
And aids, aspirin, vision. Yep, vision. And once you retire, you can pay your Medicare premiums with them, correct?
If you have money in it.
If you have money in there.
So with this one, here's uh, health and dental insurance.
So as John had said earlier, we were to, Eli and I had approached the personnel committee and asked about different insurance, if there's the option. I contacted M and M, did a bunch of reviewing and we proposed one to the personnel committee. It's a sixty-four hundred dollar deductible. Um, and it's actually cheaper than the one that we were gonna go, because I think our insurance is gonna go up two hundred, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, something like that.
Per month?
Yes.
Yeah, the current one was going up from seventeen sixty-five to two thousand twenty-four, so it's.
Over, almost four hundred bucks, yeah.
Yeah, and so the new plan that we proposed to the personnel committee is gonna be two thousand seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents a month. And that's considered an high deductible, so we qualify for the HSA.
And numbers wise overall, it's not much different, right? There's different co-insurance and then there's different, uh, we got rid of co-pays, right?
Right, cause there was a co-insurance after the thirty-four hundred dollar deductible. Now we don't have that. It's just a straight sixty-four hundred dollar deductible, is what it is.
And it's just single coverage, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, um, the, the other was the vision is staying the same, the dollar amount is staying the same. Um, the dental insurance, we looked at and um, we would like to move it up to the, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Freedom for the dental, which means it gives us a fifteen hundred dollar max out of, our max benefit for the dentist. And we can go anywhere. It doesn't matter if there's no in-network, out-of-network, it's just you can go anywhere you want. So for those who have had the same dentist for years, we can stay with our dentist.
And that one's actually cheaper than the current too, right? For the next.
Well, no, it's.
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars more. What we have currently is forty-one ninety.
Oh, I read them wrong.
Seven forty.
Forty-nine fifty, it'll be the new one. If council is approval, we do have to know by mid-December, so we can let Eminem know and get the insurances ready to go for the first of the year.
Input from the personnel committee?
I, I, I'm perfectly fine with it. Jim and I talked about it.
We've talked about, went through it. Kind of looking at uh, again, as options of being where they're at in the pay scale for an hourly wage for their job. We're gonna be limited to what we can continue to give. So this is just a, a small token or a little bump to which they both acknowledge. You know, as, it's a benefit, it's a perk, it's to be helpful and uh, keep the happy employee.
Yeah. With that being said then, somebody wanna make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Someone's a second? What I can do, all papers say aye. Miscellaneous business, anybody with miscellaneous? Anybody? Nothing? Pretty good?
That's what?
Some reminder, Mike, portion do adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Someone's a second?
I'll second it.
All papers? Thanks, everybody.